All right, we're going to get started. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, Representative of the Fourth District, Councilman Burnett, representing the Eighth District, a member of the committee; Councilman Cohen, a member of the committee, representing the First District; and Councilwoman Ramos, representing the Fourth District, a member of the committee. Fourteenth district. You're not representing my district. I won't allow it.[34.36][34.36][laughter] Representing the Office of the President, I've got Preston Lewis and Dexter Lockme. And representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Tyler Chanel. This afternoon, the committee will hold a hearing for 23-0182R, an informational hearing on the Regional Water Governance Task Force. This is for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Office of the City Administrator, the Director of the Department of Public Works, the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, and the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and any other relevant agencies to report on the topics outlined in this resolution, and provide additional information as needed by the committee. It was introduced on July 17, 2023, by Councilmember Ramos. And before we begin, for a little context, Baltimore City provides wastewater services to nearly 1.8 million folks in Maryland, spanning Baltimore City, Howard County, Baltimore County, Anaromos County, and Carroll Counties. Aging infrastructure and underfunding of that system has led to problems, and in some cases, emergencies, with service management, water quality, and service affordability and billing. In 2023, the Maryland General Assembly passed legislation that created a new task force to research and propose new government's structure for the Baltimore water system. And that task force has had six meetings to date as of January 8, and will release its final recommendations next Thursday. We're holding this follow-up hearing today to discuss the work of the task force, as well as to discuss four focal points from Resolution 23-0194R, introduced by my colleague, Councilmember Ramos, in October, in a follow-up to that last hearing. These four focuses of the resolution were stormwater, equity, the Baltimore City's votes and majority votes on that committee, and the involvement of the Baltimore City Council in the decision-making process. These were highlighted because these are crucial considerations that would ensure that Baltimore City continues to have an equitable say in what happens and what has historically been Baltimore City's own water infrastructure. So we want to provide adequate water and wastewater services to all of our constituents and folks in the other counties as well. But Baltimore City and our residents have to be considered in any recommendations that the task force puts forward. And so with that, I want to make sure, you know, we think about those considerations. We, of course, are looking forward to feedback from Chair of the Committee that is overseeing this. I want to give the floor to my colleague, Councilmember Ramos, if she's got any additional insights or comments before we begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for hosting the second hearing, and to my colleagues for being here, also to the Comptroller for being here, but also for your work as Chair of the Water Governance Task Force. I can't understate how important this is for what we're doing today, but also what the task force has been charged to do, and how it impacts and could potentially impact Baltimore City. And so the City Council, holding these hearings, is important to us because, you know, we haven't been involved. Nobody asked our opinion. So we're going to interject our opinion. And so these hearings are designed for us to get the right information and then help to make any recommendations moving forward. The task force is almost finished with its mandated work, and the Comptroller is here to give us an update from our last hearing as to how our four considerations that Mr. Chair just outlined were put into any recommendations, what the consultant that the state has hired recommended, the task force is recommending, or may recommend, because they haven't voted that yet, and then what the next steps are for this process, if there are any next steps with the General Assembly, and next steps that maybe we should consider as a council. I was listening to the last task force meeting, and it struck me that the consultants, the way that this had been working is they had outlined a bunch of models, and the task force would narrow down, D isn't good, F isn't good, A isn't good, and then they ended up with, I'm just making up those letters, but [laughs], but that, you know, ended up with looking at a couple of different options. And then the consultant had talked about doing, you know, option E, which was the authority, and all of these other questions came up in the presentation, and the task force went, wait a second, there's a lot more here that has to be looked at, and so couldn't vote that night. And I thought that was significant. I think that's due to the due diligence that the task force is doing, and the culture that Mr. Chair has created to make sure that the task force is proceeding in a way that is careful and strategic. So I do want to welcome Mr. Chair of the Committee and Mr. Comptroller to, you know, help us out with what the next steps are, with outlining the recommendations, both from the consultant and from the, potentially from the task force, because they have not made final recommendations. And I believe we'll be holding more hearings as this committee to understand what the next steps are. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember, and appreciate you really kind of leaning to this issue and not letting it go by without its proper consideration. I want to turn over to Chair of the Water Governance Task Force, the illustrious Comptroller of our city, former Councilman of the Fourth District, I can go for days. Bill, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Councilmembers. I am particularly heartened to look down at this new microphone and see labeled on it "Fourth District." So I know I'm in the right place. I know I'm in the right place. I am here today also with Richard Luna, who is the interim Director of the Department of Public Works, and Marcia Collins, who is in charge of everything that Richard isn't in charge of.[471.34][471.34][laughter] Honestly, I've lost track. What is your title now?
Chief of Legislative Affairs.
Apparently, HR hasn't figured out how to put institutional memory into a job title. I do want to appreciate this opportunity to come and share a little bit of an update with the council. This has been a really interesting experience over the last several months. I recently shared that I have learned so much about a subject that I knew I didn't know everything about, but now I have a much broader and deeper understanding of what I don't understand. That there are so many aspects to the relationship between Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and the other counties in our region when it comes to the history of water and wastewater. And I believe there's a Harry Truman quote, "There's nothing new in this world except the history you don't already know." And that allows for a lot of ground when it comes to water and wastewater in the Baltimore region. What I thought might be most productive is just taking you through the changes that we've, I guess not changes, but the progress of the task force since the last time I was able to be here. As many people saw when the draft report and recommendation came out in mid-December, there was a little bit of surprise that it did not seem to reflect things that the task force members had said or questions that they had asked in the final meeting before that, leading up to the report's publication. And I want to take an opportunity to, again, share publicly that that was the report and draft recommendation of the consultants that were hired to staff the task force and its work. The reason there was no vote that night was because there was not yet anything approaching a consensus among the task force members, and we needed to have something concrete in writing to react to. And so over the course of the next couple of weeks, there were conversations. One of the things that changed, for example, you may remember when I was here last year, the original schedule for the task force involved just a long period of public comment on that draft report, and then one final meeting on January 25. But by the middle of December, it had become clear that the task force needed another meeting, an additional meeting, so that we could have some actual time to discuss amongst ourselves, but still in an open and transparent fashion, how we were going to come to some type of consensus on moving forward. And so, working with the DPW staff and county staff and WSP, we ended up scheduling an additional meeting that was held, oh my gosh, was that just last week? Yeah, I guess. Pardon? The eighth?
January eighth.
Yeah, I was just, I guess, I've actually, that was, that was the beginning of last week. Wow. Yeah. It just seems like a whole lot of has happened since then. So we had an additional meeting a week ago Monday, and I think it was a very productive conversation. Several of the task force members had pointed out in the last two meetings of 2023 that there was sort of a structural issue with how our meetings worked, where, and this was something that we could have predicted if we thought it through in that regard. There was just so much raw information to go through that was hardwired into the legislation that created the task force. The consultants were required by the resolution, I'm sorry, by the state legislation, they were required to go through such an extensive amount of information, both in general and specifically from the NewGen report from two and a half years ago, that they were taking up a huge chunk of each of our public conversations, just trying to summarize that information and walk us through it. That the practical upshot of that was the task force's discussion was all reactive to that information which was being presented, and it left between the presentation time, sort of a discussion that was really about making sure we all understood what was being presented, and our insistence on making sure that we were providing time for public comment and input at each meeting. The practical upshot is, we were having three-hour-long meetings where there was really almost no time for the task force members to just talk back and forth about what we thought about the material that we were learning. We were spending the whole time just learning. And so the meeting on the eighth was our first real opportunity to have a conversation about what we had learned. And so what I had put together, and which provided a little bit of a focus for that conversation on the eighth, was I had taken from notes from staff, from comments that task force members had made at different presentations over the course of our work. And I basically offered a different way of looking at the recommendation that WSP had provided. And, you know, just to be very straightforward, they, WSP clearly came away from their work with an expectation that the best choice here to accomplish what the legislation asked us to do. The option that was originally identified that would address these issues best was option E. And Councilwoman Ramos, you had it right, like, we had five different options to work through, each one lettered A, B, C, D, or E. A and B were ruled out almost immediately. We spent most of the conversation over the months looking at C, which was basically a variation of what we have now, which is intermunicipal agreements between the different jurisdictions, and E, the regional water authority. And I'm going to quote from the version of the recommendation I did, which was, "We acknowledge that while E shows promise in addressing concerns about the existing governance structure, which the other options do not." And this was where I sum up where I think the task force had pretty clearly articulated at its last meeting in December. The task force does not have time to perform the requisite due diligence, which simply recommending option E requires. And that includes things like doing an equity study, doing sufficient research into debt service to make certain that the city does not end up spending hundreds of millions of dollars refinancing existing debt so that a new entity can be the formal owner of all of that existing debt. Pension and benefits research to assuage the very reasonable concerns of the workers at both the city and the county DPWs. If you work right now for Baltimore's DPW, and we create a regional water authority, now you're going to go work for that regional water authority, what happens to all of the money you put into your pension? Who is in charge of negotiating the benefits for what you will get in the future? How, you know, how will this work for new people? And then finally, stormwater research, because we had agreed earlier in the process that while stormwater may have been left out of the legislation, it was really too big of an issue to simply be ignored and should be considered in what we're trying to do. Actually, I'm going to pause there, because that reminds me, this is a good point, I don't have a copy in front of me of the four specific items that the council had requested at the last meeting. If you want to go down that list again, I'm going to look and make sure that I can point out where each one of those either is addressed in these draft recommendations, or look meaningful back at the folks from my office, look meaningfully at them about making sure that we get that into draft number four.
Sure. There were four considerations. The first was stormwater.
Yeah.
The second was equity.
Okay.
The third was Baltimore City majority votes, and the fourth was involvement of the City Council in that process.
Okay. So I'm going to work backwards there and say, in deference to the fact that this does involve multiple jurisdictions, it was going to be hard to work in specifically just the Baltimore City Council. But I think, and I think we did discuss this at the last meeting, most, if not all of the versions of these recommendations that have been considered would involve the Baltimore City Council having to sign off on the substantive aspects of the changes being recommended, whether those be code changes or charter changes. Those would come through the City Council for the ones affecting Baltimore City, and some of them would affect Baltimore County in terms of their existing Department of Public Works, and those would have to go through the Baltimore County Council as well.
Mr. Chair, can I just add to that real quick? I think that our intent for, we know that a lot of this would come before us.
Yeah.
But if we haven't been involved in the conversation before all of that, that's not fair to the council, and that's not fair to the residents. So the point here was for us to be involved either at this task force level, or whatever the next iteration of it is, or part of the board that you recommend here, you know, that one of us or some of us are on there, or somehow that there is interaction of information. Because if we get a bill and seeing this for the first time without having been involved in the conversation, that does a total disservice to the entire process, but also to us. So that was our intent around being involved.
Very understandable, and the closest thing I can give you to a pleasing answer is, that's a big part of why I'm here and why I am comfortable returning whenever you wish. I don't think it is likely that the task force will create something that will structurally involve the City Council, but one of the promises I made when I ran for the Comptroller Office was to make sure that I respect the City Council and the role it has to play in running Baltimore City government. And so I am happy to keep you personally involved in where the task force is going when it comes to keeping you updated in terms of the progress of this task force. I expect there to be a second iteration of this as we go through the draft recommendations. I expect that there will be something else, some other body set up, that will carry into the future the need to do things like the equity study, the debt service research, et cetera. I can't promise that that group will have City Council participation directly, but if I am on it, just as I have with this iteration, I am 100% comfortable promising to continue to keep you personally involved to the best of my ability.
Well, we can talk about this offline, but, you know, we will continue to advocate to being more involved.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that looks like yet. I might know after we have this conversation today, but I think that there's a need for that. So, thank you.
Yeah. Open with the floor to other questions.
I did want to say there was one other item that I wanted to make sure was acknowledged, which was, one of the four things that the council had asked for was to involve, to make sure that the eventual board had a majority of city representation. And one of the recommendations in, or I guess technically sub-recommendations in this, is specifically, while the working group may or may not choose to specify the exact composition of the authority's board, we, this is the task force that's in place right now, we recommend that a simple majority of the board be chosen by city officials to respect the city's ownership of the water and wastewater system. I can't promise that that will stay in there, but it's in there for now.
I appreciate that. Any more?
No. I mean, at this point, I've been kind of talking, so I'd much rather respond to more specific questions.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Comptroller Henry. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Porter, who's joined the meeting. I do have a couple of questions that I'd like to dig into, and we can start there, and then I'll hand off to the rest of the committee as we kind of work through. The first I have is, how would the regional authority affect racial and economic equity? So in the draft, the report indicates that the equity analysis would be conducted while doing a final feasibility study, but the equity analysis would not then be used to inform the governance that would be most equitable. So how are we thinking about that sort of timeline and how we would consider that equity conversation if we did?
So that is one of the things that I, I have, I think I speak for the task force on this. I'll know for certain after we've seen all the comments. But I think that the task force would like to have a more nuanced version of that, rather than recommending that we do an authority and saying, now that we've decided we're going to do an authority, we're going to have that authority, or we're going to have somebody do an equity study to make sure that that's okay. What we're saying is, we get that an authority checks off all these boxes for why you think it's a good idea, but there are all these boxes that remain unchecked. And rather than say, yes, we're going to do it unless one of these boxes ends up not getting checked, I think we do it on a more conditional fashion, where we've identified some short-term things that we can focus on that will hopefully benefit everybody. While we're doing these things, another group should continue to do the due diligence on this authority proposal, and this time, make sure that you allot yourself sufficient time to actually do all of the due diligence. The time allotted for this particular task force was insufficient to accomplish this level of research and analysis. But the good news is, I think that the important thing here is to show that we are moving forward in addressing these issues, as opposed to we have to show that we're going to do some huge transformative thing without any real proof that it will actually be okay right away. So we have, in this version of the draft recommendations, a Phase One, which is the short term, and there are a couple of things that we can do right away, and I'll come back to that. While that's happening, over the course of the next two or three years, a separate group can do really a more, well, instead of more, I'll say a less time-pressured, take a less time-pressured approach to really studying these issues that we've identified. And they, you know, the working group should include, but not be limited to, a subgroup that looks into equity. There is a need for an equity analysis to understand the impact of transition to a newly-established authority on vulnerable residents in each jurisdiction, and that would include recommended programming to support recommended programming to support residents through actions associated with transition. One of the things that I see as a potential benefit to a regional entity is, we have some really positive programs here in Baltimore City, like Water for All, when it comes to helping customers who are most challenged with their water and wastewater bills. But those are Baltimore City-specific programs, and even though the system covers multiple regions, those programs right now only cover vulnerable residents here in Baltimore City. One of the positives of a regional approach would be making it easier to spread those types of programs out to cover vulnerable residents in a much wider area. Another issue is, we need to study the finances of this. We, you know, made a very cursory examination during the time we had available to us, but at this point right now, and I keep harping on this issue of the debt service for the existing, the existing debt service, right now, Baltimore City has hundreds of millions of dollars of outstanding debt on the water and wastewater system.
1.4 for water, 1.6 billion for wastewater.
Yeah, okay, and by hundreds of millions, I mean billions. So we have 1.45 billion dollars in outstanding debt for water, and 1.7 million, I'm sorry, 1.7 billion in outstanding debt for wastewater. Right now, if we just started a new regional water authority, the expectation is, that regional water authority would have to take ownership of that debt, which means refinancing it at today's interest rates. And, yeah, it's like, I heard somebody react verbally in the way that I wish I had been limited to when I first heard that. It would, it would cost literally hundreds of millions of dollars in extra interest just to refinance that outstanding debt with what we know now. Bond Council is already looking at, is there any way to do this where we wouldn't have to refinance that debt? But they have not yet identified that possibility. I'm sorry, they have not identified that, how they would actually do it. They have some thoughts, but they're complex.
Can I ask a question, a related question there? So one of the things with the regional water authority is that there would be a lease of the water system to that authority theoretically. In the report, in the draft report, it doesn't outline a cost for that lease. It identified roughly $5 to $15 million in transition costs, which, I'm not, that's not 1.5 billion.
Oh, no. That's, yeah.
That doesn't cover that. Okay. So I'm curious, have we thought much about what that lease cost might look like and what that would mean for the city?
Yeah, I'm really curious too. And I'm curious for a couple reasons. There's, there's the specific reasons, like for example, in Detroit, when they converted to an authority, they worked out an arrangement where the authority is paying Detroit $50 million a year to lease the system that Detroit still owns. But there are limitations to what Detroit can spend that money on, and as far as I've been able to understand, it, Detroit is only spending that money on things that would have been the authority's responsibility. Like, for example, the, that money goes to cover payments into the retirement system for the workers who came from working for Detroit and are now employed by the Regional Water Authority, but their pensions are still in Detroit's pension system. So some of what the Regional Water Authority is paying as a lease payment is really just the employer paying its pension responsibilities. So I'm not sure that that really is something that we should be thinking of as a lease payment. If that were happening, like if we were doing this, I don't understand why we would call it that. I, we would just say that the authority has to pay its, you know, its pension responsibilities. But the philosophical question I have about a lease is, unless that lease payment is coming just from the counties or the state, if the lease payment is coming from the authority, then that means the money that it's raising to pay the lease payment is coming from its ratepayers, which means the existing city customers as well as the county customers. And so I say that to say, I'm not quite sure why we would be really excited or enthusiastic about getting a big lease payment from the authority when it's just, I mean, we should, we should be thinking about a lease payment as, we're just spreading a tax across ourselves and the county. And I would think that, from the city's perspective, we would want that money to go for building the system so that we have a good, strong system, more than trying to make money off of it to fund other parts of government. But that's, that's just my initial sort of reaction to this. I, also, I had a very interesting conversation with a lawyer who will remain nameless for now until I determine whether she wants to be public about this. But she had done some research into the various intermunicipal agreements and the state legislation over the, honestly, centuries at this point. And she had some very serious concerns about whether the state had effectively locked us into an inequitable set of deals, in terms of, when the state first required the city to provide water at cost and on demand to Baltimore County, there were 700,000 people living in Baltimore City, and there were 70,000 people in Baltimore County. And it was really just about making sure that that minority was, you know, given the opportunity to have water, have access to water. But now, roughly 100 years later, the situation does not seem to be one where, if, if this were happening today and there was no underlying state requirement, we have effectively been underwriting the expansion and development of Baltimore County for decades, and not sharing at all financially from it. We've, we've been literally helping them build their tax base at cost. And there is the question of, are we owed something across, over the years, for that? And how do we factor that into the financial equation as we move forward?
I'm glad you brought that up, because as you were explaining that, one thing that, because I'm not a lawyer, I wasn't here, you know, 200 years ago, and certainly even in the course of talking through this, there's so much that I really still don't understand about the structure of the water system and what ownership even means for the city. We own lands all over this state that are nowhere near Baltimore City, in part because of this water system. So what I can't wrap my hands around, and maybe what might be missed by not having some sort of payment for ownership of the water system, is the expenses that come simply by owning the water system and having the responsibility for being the central authority that has to be involved at its very core in any decision-making that happens across the region when it comes to water. That can't really be calculated, or maybe it can, I don't know. But it's really sometimes hard to, every time these conversations happen, like Baltimore County is not having this meeting, Baltimore City is. And there's a time, you know, for the director and for everybody else, including yourself, that we have to spend, in addition to all the other work that we have to do just to manage this water system, that of course serves everybody, but doing so at cost is not the reality, because it's costing all of us out here in this room today, our time and therefore money of the city in order to address this issue. So I'm going to hand off.
To Councilmember.
To Councilmember Ramos, and then we'll go down the line.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. On your last point, Mr. Comptroller, when you feel it is appropriate to publicize that analysis of the historic legislation and other things that you just described, because you just said that you have a lawyer working on it, I would like to say.
No, she, she pointed out to me that it should be done.
Oh, okay.
She, she had done some research and analysis and just come up with what I shared.
Mm-hmm.
And, but it would need to be, and honestly, I think the, there's, there's two sides to it. There is a legal side, and there's a political side.
Sure.
On the, on the legal side, she would do that, somebody needs to do more analysis to find out if there's actually a court case here. But I suspect what's more likely, although I will echo the Chair, not a lawyer, nor 200 years old, so not a vampire lawyer, the, I think the, probably the more important aspect of this, it's the political aspect, where I wonder how other counties might look at this situation, where, you know, like, you know, would Montgomery and Prince George's look at this situation and feel more sympathetic to Baltimore County's lack of direct control over their water and wastewater system, you know, or the one serving them? Or would they look at this situation and be more sympathetic to the fact that Baltimore City has invested all of this, all these resources over such an extended period of time, simply to help their surrounding neighbor grow to the point where that neighbor has now eclipsed us in population and tax base?
Right. Well, I, I think we'd have a super long conversation about that in general, but just to sort of stick with the recommendations, given the timeframe we have today. In your, we all have it in front of us, and the public can see it on the website, because it's on the website, but you, and you started down this path, but I'm wondering if you can just summarize what you are proposing on the 25th. We know that you've spent a lot of time today talking about the fact that Option E is the, was the recommendation from the consultants. The task force was not comfortable making that recommendation, but it sounds like what you're recommending, or this group of people, whoever wrote this, is recommending is a much more strategic approach in terms of thinking, and also that there's a phase where all of these studies that you just outlined would be done, and there would be thresholds to meet. So if, let's say this 1.7 billion, or however we frame it, is just a deal breaker, then it's a deal breaker. And then Option E doesn't occur, and then there's going to be, there might be another option, right? So can you outline a little bit, there's, there's this very short-term one, that we have to have this longer conversation about this first short-term one, and we will, but then going into the, you know, what the, you went through the sort of threshold issues that have to be addressed, and then go into, well, okay, so if, and who's going to do that study, by the way? And then this option of, if Option E doesn't occur, what then happens? But it sounds like from all of these steps in the process of at least moving the conversation forward, acknowledging that what's happening now doesn't, isn't working, but that something has to change, there's always some oversight from a city-county body. Is that correct? And, and what does that look like? So I know that's a lot of questions put into one place. So I guess the first thing is to just go over what your draft says, just for transparency's sake for the public, and then, you know, short, and then answer my second question about sort of who's, who's carrying the stuff forward, and then we need to have a larger conversation about Option One.
Okay, so in the short term, what we would be recommending, and I want to stress at this point that I'm talking about this iteration of the draft recommendation that is currently before the task force. In terms of the task force's process, WSP is right now in the, is right now collating written comments from individual task force members on this draft, and will be circulating a next draft, including all of those comments and suggestions later this week. And then the task force will make a decision next week at its final meeting. Do I have the?
If it's next week, it's next week.
Yeah, next week.
Yeah, okay. And so, working off of this draft, in the short term, we're recommending, well, in the short term, we would be recommending a variation of Option C, which is the intermunicipal agreements concept, which is technically what we currently have. Right now, Baltimore City owns the system, Baltimore City runs the system, Baltimore City has separate contractual obligations with Baltimore County, Howard County, Harford County, Anne Arundel County, Carroll, and Carroll County. PK, you can sit up here. Okay, all right. The idea being that the variation of Option C would be breaking Water and Wastewater, the Bureau, out of the Department of Public Works and making it a standalone department, as has been done in the past with the previous bureaus of Transportation and General Services. The task force member who recommended this, Keisha Powell, who used to be here running the Bureau of Water and Wastewater, she was very clear about pointing out that this would actually be returning Water and Wastewater to full department status, which is what it had been decades ago before it was brought into Public Works. it had been decades ago before it was brought into Public Works. I will quote her when I say that creating this, or returning this standalone Water and Wastewater Department would allow for a singular focus and necessary resources to effectively manage operations, maintenance, capital investment, and service delivery for the existing regional water and wastewater utility responsible for both retail and wholesale That is something that even if this recommendation were, would go through and the task force would make it, the city council would be part of that conversation because breaking Water and Wastewater out and setting up its own department is a charter change and that would be legislation that would have to come here. The other part of that short-term approach would involve setting up a city-county water advisory committee. This would provide input and assistance to the new department as it continues to make operational improvements. And I think everybody involved has been willing to acknowledge that while DPW has definitely had some challenges over the years, there have also been some very clear and productive efforts in the recent times to improve operations. And so we're very comfortable looking at this approach as a way to continue operational improvements. Be, I'm trying to figure out how to describe the city-county water advisory committee. It goes into a lot of details in the draft recommendation, but I would say that this group, I'll just quote this part, "The committee's scope of work would include but not be limited to engagement in long-term planning, drought response, capacity planning, CIP prioritization, customer service and support, and water and sewer billing issues." It would be up to the city and the county to work out how that group would be composed and the level of input that it would have would be a culture issue more than it would be a structure issue because it would be up to the city to determine how much is that group going to have actual control over the actions of the new Department of Water and Wastewater. But that's happening, literally, we could start working on that the week after these recommendations come out if we wanted to. But then there is a Phase 2, which is a more long-term approach, and that's where we're recognizing the fact that the due diligence for pursuing a regional water authority really will take years to do properly and appropriately. And so we would recommend that a subsequent task force, some type of dedicated professional working group, would be set up. And that working group would have subgroups to cover the specific issues that need to be addressed: equity, financial, human capital, legal, and operational. And the operational, that's where I just want to call attention to the fact that under operational, it describes the assessment of any administrative and operational adjustments needed to transition to a regional water authority, including a comprehensive examination and analysis of whether stormwater management should be included in the authority's responsibilities because we did not have the time to do that appropriately at our level. It also makes a point of recommending that the General Assembly provide financial support for that working group. Just as a side note, one of the issues that we ran into with this task force was, since the task force was a creation of the state and was not a city entity or a county entity, neither the city's law department nor the county's law department felt comfortable providing it with legal advice. So rather than have a fight with the Attorney General's Office trying to get them to do it, we're just saying, well, we're pretty much done now, but if you guys do this again, make sure you provide funding for outside counsel so that that is not an issue that that group has to deal with. And then if, and then there's a second part to the Phase 2, which is, let's say we do that due diligence and let's say we do come up with a deal breaker. And speaking personally and individually, I think an inability to address the debt service issue should be a deal breaker because the city certainly can't afford to pay that kind of money out of pocket. And if the authority pays that kind of money out of the pocket, it's still city residents paying a big chunk of it. And there were some very vague hints that, well, maybe the state could, you know, help us out there. But the honest-to-God truth is, that is literally hundreds of millions of dollars that's just going into the private market. I mean, it's not like that money's going to us or anybody here. So I don't, I wouldn't even want this, I mean, if the state has an extra couple hundred million dollars laying around to help us with our water and wastewater system, I'd rather that they give us a couple hundred million dollars to help with the water and wastewater system and not spend it on refinancing expenses. So the, if it turns out that there are any deal breakers and we can't move forward with Option E, one of the task force members had suggested the idea of a Baltimore Regional Water Governance Board, which would be made up of city, county, and state leaders with the necessary water financing and other expertise needed to oversee and coordinate regional planning, financing, management, and operations of both city and county water and wastewater systems. And what this group would effectively do is, they would be set up probably by state legislation and the state could give them the authority to actually direct the operations of both the city's water and wastewater system and the county's. And it would be this overriding commission that would steer water and wastewater policy instead of either the city or the county. But the ownership of the systems and the employment would not change. There would still be employees of Baltimore City's Water and Wastewater and there'd be employees for Baltimore County. It's just the heads of each of those departments would be taking their marching orders from this regional water governance board instead of from the city administrator or the county And that, I mean, that's the TLDR version. It's a page long, but that's the gist of it.
No, I appreciate you going through that and I think it was detailed enough that we got the idea of the fact that we still have, again, there's this idea of separating and oversight and then there's the threshold issues, deal breakers that have to be established. And if there is one deal breaker, then it's, we've got to do something else. I guess the, there's, I have a lot of questions in my head about what we discussed earlier with, you know, how we basically subsidize Baltimore County's growth, but that, I think we'll have to, I don't know how we'll have that conversation yet, but we should. But in terms of this idea of, do we, have there been conversations? Not yet because you haven't presented to the task force in terms of whether or not the General Assembly will create another, to be able to do the Phase 2 basically of what we're talking about here. Have you had those conversations at all with the General Assembly yet or you're waiting until after the 25th when it becomes, when and if it becomes official?
Yeah, I have, I personally have not had conversations with the General Assembly. I have had, there are representatives from each house on the task force. We have Senator Corey McCray and we have Delegate Dana Stein. And I would expect that they are the ones who are sort of, they were each appointed by the presiding officer for their chamber. So I have worked under the assumption that they are keeping their presiding officers briefed on where the task force is heading and I have not heard back from either of them. This doesn't sound like something our chamber is interested in doing. So in the absence of being discouraged, I prefer to be encouraged.
And I guess this is also where we, where, you know, there's two phases here where there's oversight boards. And this is where I'm asking for council participation because, you know, we're accountable to our residents and if all of this is happening at a 30,000-foot level without, you know, a chance to have the council who's, you know, elected by the, you know, members of the public to be a part of this, I think that that's a challenge. So I would hope that the task force would follow our recommendation and say that there has to be representative. And that's fine, we can have representatives of the Baltimore County Council, totally fine with me. But I think that we need to be a part of those conversations and need to be a part of, you know, these deliberations, but also if there's going to be this oversight of water, wastewater, you know, what I don't want to have happen is there is a bias in the state. And I would say in the county in particular that we're terrible. We, the city, are horrible at what we're doing. And I just can't accept that. Yes, we have things to work on. Yes, the department has actually done a lot of work from that report two years ago. You know, the dispute resolution process is working. Ms. Horn and Ms. Cole have just done an amazing job. The, you know, for these oversight boards with the bias that, I mean, yeah, we've got a lot of work to do, no question. We actually need help. We don't need people to tell us that we're terrible. And so I'd rather that we have these boards be in charge of, sure, they can, you know, look and see how we're doing, but then also making recommendations for how the county can help, the state can help. You know what I mean? It's not, it's not, it shouldn't always be that Baltimore City is horrible. Again, acknowledging that we have tons of work to do to improve our systems. But it, we also know that the residents here have been, you know, you know, county residents complain about a lot of different things about our system, you know, city residents, we complain too. I mean, we're still paying the higher rate. I mean, if that isn't resolved in any of this, that the residents are paying higher in Baltimore City than in Baltimore County, then we have failed. Then we have failed. This whole effort has been a waste. And so I would say that that document, this needs to reflect that in this document somehow. Or maybe we just do a letter like we did, or a resolution like we did last time. Because I think that there's just a lot, I'm just afraid that the bias against us is going to work against us. And I think that, and I will be clear, I've campaigned on a regional water authority, I did last election. I'm learning a lot about what still needs to be done in order to go there. I'm willing to go through this entire process for the better, to improve the outcomes for our residents. If our residents are still paying higher rates and Baltimore County residents, we have failed to go through this process in a really just inequitable way. And so I just think that we've got, it's not, it's just not reflective enough of what we hope to be able to achieve here. It's important that we do it. It's an important exercise, absolutely. It's an important, because what's working, it's not working right now. But the idea that there will be oversight from people who may be biased against us already is a problem.
So, as is so often the case, Councilwoman, you've given me a lot to react to. I feel I should start by saying I share many, if not all, of your frustrations. It is incredibly disappointing. It is frustrating. It is sometimes hurtful to have to acknowledge the fact that there are people who don't like us and think ill of us and don't know us and actually recognize what we are capable of. I read one article recently that had a county official who will remain nameless comment publicly on the record that we needed to, like, that the county needs to take back their water. And as best as I could understand, she was talking about the water from the reservoirs that are located in the county because I don't think she understands that they're actually owned by the city. And I think that that's a wonderful example of how it is incumbent on us not to get overly concerned with the hurtful statements of people who don't know what they're talking about. I am happy to discuss and debate the relationship between the city and the county with people who understand it properly, but there are people who don't understand and so sometimes it's best to just listen and nod and shrug. The other thing I will say is I will take one bit of disagreement, which is I would not characterize the work that this task force has done as a failure simply because we have not achieved equality of rate paying. And the reason I feel comfortable saying that is because that was not the point of this task force. If we have failed to find a way to make sure that there is an equality of rate paying across the region, we have failed to try to do that. To the best of my understanding, there has not been any real serious effort towards that goal as its own thing. As someone who also previously thought a regional water authority would be pretty good until I learned more about what's involved, as somebody who believes in regionalism, one of the things that I honestly expected out of this process is if we found ourselves moving towards a regional water authority, excuse me, the benefit to the county of a regional water authority is a share in the governance. The benefit to the city of a regional authority would be equality of rate paying. And we had conversations in the task force specifically to that point. Had we recommended Option E, had we recommended that we definitely moved to a regional water authority, it would have been over my dead body that that recommendation not include a recommendation for equal rate paying across the region. And where I think we have succeeded on the issue And where I think we have succeeded on the issue of inequality of rate paying is, I think we have now gotten this out into the sunlight in a way that it wasn't quite before. In the past, there were people who complained about it, but there was enough uncertainty over how the rate's paying, and how the, the true-up, and how the, how the money moves around. There was enough uncertainty about it that, for the first couple of weeks that we tried to answer Senator McCray's really basic question of, you know, how much do we pay compared to what the county pays? It literally took weeks to get to the point where we weren't quite sure. So I think if anything, we have, we have brought the subject now to a higher level of awareness. And maybe now that we, maybe we will see that. Maybe that is something that could be its own push in the, in the General Assembly, to make sure that wherever you have, you know, regional water and wastewater systems, where they, you know, cover more than one jurisdiction, there has to be some level of equality of rate paying. But at this point, I don't think that is unilaterally possible for Baltimore City to achieve. It would have to be done either in cooperation with the counties, or imposed from above by the state.
Right, and I totally agree with that. I mean, I think sometimes we have to give in order to get what, so, but I think this, this is an important, and I'm glad that that was brought up during the deliberations. I didn't get to listen to all of the hearings, so I'm very glad to know. I'm sorry.
I want to make sure I give our other colleagues an opportunity to ask their questions. Councilman, Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. Appreciate your erudition and thoroughness, and I look forward to the bill-explains-stuff on this. Good luck, good luck, Casey and friends, and run that one.
That's going to be a special double episode with a cliffhanger in the middle.
I expect it to last one minute or less, as they all have been. No, but seriously, appreciate all the diligence that you all have put into this, and the, you know, commitment to trying to get it as close to right as I think it possibly can in a challenging set of political dynamics and all the rest. One of the things that I think we heard a lot from advocates, particularly heading into, I don't know if it was the last or the previous meeting, was this concern about, in essence, will the city, does the city take it on the nose in some kind of collaborative task force thing versus the county essentially benefiting? That, there were some questions around equity and around a rate hike, you know, we've talked, you've talked a little bit about the debt and the debt service. And I think my colleague was kind of getting there in her questioning as well. But I, I guess I am kind of curious, as someone who also sees a real need for regionalism and for operating collectively and working together with our neighbors, but this critique that, you know, in, in some of these options, the city will shoulder the bulk of the burden. I guess, how are you thinking about, or how is the task force thinking about sort of that layer of equity? And I understand, you know, you said that's not, that wasn't, you know, equalizing rate paying wasn't the mandate of the task force. But I think that, you know, my colleague is right, and I think that there is a real concern, at least from me, for the city, that whatever we end up with does not add additional financial burden on the city, whether that's debt service, whether that's the rate, you know, however you chop it. And so I am curious sort of how we're thinking about a more equitable distribution, because I do think it is fair to say that we have shouldered the bulk of the burden, and yet, as Councilman Ramos said, you know, are often seen as like the idiot stepchild of the state that can't do anything right, which I think plays out frequently in Baltimore. So I'm just curi, I am curious about that specific piece, is like, how internally are you all thinking about a system that i- is more equal, equitable, that, that does not result in sort of the already, I think, somewhat lopsided payment system being even more lopsided?
In, in no way, shape, or form do I want to imply that I'm excusing discrimination or racism or any of the other ways that sometimes the, the, the city gets kicked around and, and beaten up by, by the counties. I do have the misfortune of knowing a little history. And I will quote Elijah Cummings when I say that hurt people hurt people. And there were, there was a period in time before any of us were in this room where Baltimore City was the 800-pound gorilla of state politics. And my understanding is, we behaved like it. And the, the danger of a, a large legislative body like the General Assembly, where seniority is more likely to be directly connected to power, is that as the political fortunes of the city changed relative to the counties with the loss of population, there were always plenty of county politicians who were, at that time, still old enough to remember being mistreated by city politicians. And I believe they were successful, as any good fraternity or sorority is, at passing their attitudes down to the people who came after them. And I think, to some extent, while, again, I'm not going to minimize or excuse the fact that some of the criticism is almost certainly racism, I do want to also be similarly forthright with the fact that some of the people who don't like us have been trained to not like us, by people who were trained to not like us, by people we screwed over. And so that's its own culture that's going to have to be fixed. And it's its own challenge for us as we try to make our way in state politics as now a kind of average-size county, as the case may be. But, you know, all of that being said, I believe that the most important thing we can do to, to respond to our critics is be excellent. We just, I mean, we just need to be better. And I, I don't mean that to say that we're not trying. I'm just saying that we owe it to the residents and businesses of Baltimore City to be as good as it is possible to be. That's already, that's already our mission, that's already what we should be focusing on. And I think that if we can just be more successful at that, a very helpful side effect will be, it will make it harder for people who don't like us to criticize us for, on merit.
No, I think that's a useful, that is useful history, I will say. I mean, not to overly go there, but, you know, we do now have a Senate president who is himself a Baltimorean, a governor, who as of two years ago was a Baltimorean, a comptroller, who's a Baltimorean, you know, I mean, we, while you're right, as we have lost-
So we can't be that bad.
Yeah. I, I mean, as we have lost population and stature and clout in Annapolis, you know, I think we are in a unique moment to really reclaim, I'm, I'm not going to say sort of the trauma pattern that you talked about, where we bully other people and be the 800-pound gorilla in the room, but I, I do think that this is an important moment for our city to reestablish itself, and to acknowledge that there has been work to improve system functioning, particularly as it relates to water bills and our water system. All that to be said, yeah, I, I just hope that there is, and I know there is, because you're chairing the task force, but that, that there is some real acknowledgement of the ways in which, historically and currently, Baltimore is often put at a disadvantage in spite of providing more than its share for the rest of the state. And I'll just leave it at that.
Councilman Burnett?
Whatever one has said, I agree. So I had a question about any, I guess, deliberation on the regional planning aspect of this. One of the things that we've seen, particularly for inland flooding issues, speaking for my district, with, you know, the Beechfield area being pretty close to Alacott City, and obviously they're, you know, taking steps to remediate flood mitigation, and we're on our end, working with our water, wastewater folks to try and do the same on our end. One of the things that I did note in that recommendation was that there were concerns about the ability to conduct adequate planning into the future, you know, system upgrades and that sort of coordination. And I know for sure it's not happening now, at a, at a scale that I think would be beneficial, but certainly to not, would not be able to support this type of initiative without a more concerted sort of tangential effort to coordinate planning related to the system and have more insight into, I guess, the respective planning departments and any other entities that are doing those sort of capital improvements along the way. Can you talk about, like, what are, some of the conversations that were had in that area? Because that really does stand out to me as a, a big concern with something like this, without having some sort of political binding cooperation agreement that, you know, speaks to the sort of capital needs of a regional, a regional system.
I'm, I'm going to look over at Richard and Marcia when I say that I would characterize it as there hasn't been a lot of discussion, as much as there's just been sort of a fairly universal acknowledgement that there hasn't been any real regional planning, and that it needs to be done. And nobody disagreed with that, so there was no reason to discuss it at length. There, there are, there are references to it scattered throughout both my sort of reframing draft recommendation and the WSP. I actually think the WSP report was pretty, you know, expressive about that being one of the real benefits of a regional water authority, is that it is, you know, intrinsically incentivized to do regional planning. I think that you don't need a regional water authority to do regional planning, and what you just need is, you need partners who are willing to work together and be, what, what I, what I think I actually said when I was here last time was, one of the things that I liked, and I, without putting words in her mouth, I suspect that this is one of the things that also appeals to, to Councilwoman Ramos, is what I liked about a regional authority is that, right now, or not, I mean, historically, the, the cooperation between Baltimore City and the surrounding counties is literally something that relies on the individual personalities of the leaders of those subdivisions at any given moment in time. And, and a, and a reg, and some type of regional entity would be an opportunity to institutionalize cooperation, so that even when you have somebody who is running the city and is an isolationist, or someone who is running one of the counties and hates that blankety-blank city and doesn't want to work with them, you have to, because there's some type of structure that continues on from before they were in power and will still be there after they leave. So, so I, I would say that almost anything that I think we come up with is going to include the need for more regional planning in it. I, I just can't speak to the specific wording, or what form that'll come in. Yeah, okay.
Got it. The second thing I had, and this may be small, but the appointment looked like it just was mayor and county executive to this authority. Would that still have to go through the council's confirmation process?
That's a great question. I appreciate that. The, with that, I, I think I can say that has not been discussed. If you're interested in my speculation, I would point out that council people fought for years unsuccessfully to get school board commissioners to come back to being confirmed by the council after the, the current system was set up. So I don't know what the likelihood is of that, but I would imagine it would be pretty slim. I, I mean, I, I can see why it would be desirable, but it would be a kind of a weird thing, because either you would be separating the membership, so that some members were approved by the Baltimore City Council, some members were approved by the Baltimore County Council, maybe some members are approved by the General Assembly, because most of the place, most, most of the versions of this conversation have included representation from at least the city and the county and the state. And there have been requests for Howard County to have representation also. So unless you were going to have a quadricated system where, you know, each entity sending representatives had their legislature confirm the members appointed by their executive, it seems unlikely that there would just be the city council doing it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be my expectation. I'm just saying, county council, city council, General Assembly, everything.
I, I don't think, I don't think that's an unreasonable ask, but it definitely hasn't come up. And hold on for a second, this is where I do the turn around and look meaningfully at my, we should put that in. Yeah, okay. I can, I can assure you that it will.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. One question, I just sort of asked this, and are there any regional entities that we are currently looking at, that exist now, that we are thinking it might emulate?
Like, there is no one situation anywhere that is a perfect model of what we would want to be here.
And at the moment, there is no regional entity in the Baltimore region that I can think of.
There's a regional transit authority.
No, there isn't. There isn't. There should be.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's not, it's, there is a regional transportation group. It is not, it is not really a transit authority, but-
A commission.
There's, is it, is it the advisory? I, I know that there is, that, there's also the Baltimore Regional Council of Governments, which is just everybody getting together and trying to do planning. But no, there is no, there is nothing like this here in our region. There is the Washington Sewer, San-
WSSC.
WSSC. I'm, you know what, six months later, I'm still not able to rattle off what the S's are, but-
Sanitary Sewer Commission.
Is it Sanitary and Sewer? Is it Sanitary and Sewer? Okay.
Washington Sanitary Sewer.
Okay. I mean, they cover Montgomery and Prince George's County. But, okay, but I, yeah, but, but I, but there is, but there are enough aspects of how they are organized that there were task force members who did not want to replicate them exactly. They, but we got a lot of input from how they approach things because we have both the current and a former chief executive for WSSC on the task force.
Got it. Thank you. Councilman Porter, Ramos.
Thank you. I do want to point out that we do have a lot of regional partners and people that really want to be a part of this to make, you know, to have a system that works. So I'm not saying that everybody hates us. I'm just saying that there are some. And I do want to work with those partners, and I think that we do have regional partners, and so that's what gives me a little bit, that I'm very much struggling with this entire topic in terms of, you know, the priorities that we have for our city as well as what we also need for our city and how we can, we can achieve it, and whether an authority would do that or not, you know. I think we do have to go through this iterative process to kind of figure it out, so I do appreciate that piece of it. I had a question, just going back to, going back to the first piece around separating water and wastewater from the solid waste piece, are, is there, is the, maybe this is for the mayor's office or for DPW, is this something you've started to look at? Is it something that, I mean, there's this kind of different theories around, you know, separating things out. One is you've got economies of scale, you're able to put budgets together now. The other is that it's very difficult to hire an executive that has both solid waste and water. So I'm just kind of wondering if this, if you've already started looking at this, or you're just kind of waiting for this process to move forward before you've been thinking about whether or not that's something you want to do?
I can certainly speak with the city administrator and a deputy city administrator and get back to you on that. And the question is, has the task force started looking at what that separation looks like?
No, the city.
Or has the administration? Okay. Yeah, I'll get back to you with that information.
And it could be that they, we haven't because we haven't gotten this recommendation nor the mandate to do so. I was just curious.
Okay. Yeah, I can get back to you with that information.
Yeah, because I also think it would take, just like when DHCD was separated from HABC, you know, the resource issue was certainly a big issue. I think that happened to work. I think, I'm glad that that occurred. But, you know, it did take resources to do that. So I think that that's something that is like, if it, if it comes before us, it would, it would be the first thing that would come before us. So I think having that would be helpful. Thanks.
Seems we, do we have any testimony? Let's see if we have any folks who are looking to testify. None signed up at the moment. For folks that are joining us virtually, if you would like to testify on this issue, please use the raise hand function, and we'll unmute you and allow you an opportunity to Mary Grant?
Committee for holding this hearing today. I'm Mary Grant, the, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Oh, great. I'm Mary Grant, the Public Water for All Campaign Director at Food and Water Watch and a city resident. So on behalf of our 14,000 members and supporters in the city, we ask that the city council work to preserve local control of our biggest asset, the water and wastewater system. It sounds like much of the work of the task force is driven by a fear that the state and counties could collude to take over our water through state legislation. State takeovers of water systems have been disastrous, from Detroit to Flint. I also want to lift up two findings from the task force process for you to consider. One, a key finding is that the regional water authority would require overturning Baltimore City's water privatization ban. The consultants found that the privatization ban, ballot question E of 2018, which was overwhelmingly approved by city voters, currently prohibits a lease of the water system to an authority. Overturning the ban would discredit any promise not to recommend privatization, as it would open the door to future deals. Two, another finding from the task force is to confirm what city residents have long known. As Councilmember Ramos emphasized, city residents pay more than county residents for water. I appreciate the comptroller for bringing up concerns about the historical inequities in the water systems. City residents have long known that they have and are subsidizing growth in the county. Moreover, the county uses substantially more water than city resident, multiple times what a city resident uses. The county is putting a greater stress on our system, and it's more expensive to serve less dense areas. And it's clear from the task force meetings that the county wants control of our system, and that is driven in part by the need to accommodate even more growth in the county. So from a city perspective, county leaders want to, instead of addressing the wasteful water practices of their residents and businesses or to promote smart development, county leaders are pushing for more control of our water system. So at a time when everyone in this room is working so hard for local control of our police and our schools, again, we ask you to fight any effort that could take away your ability to pass local laws and protections governing our water systems. Instead of stripping away local control through a regional authority overseen by unelected Board of Directors, I urge you to ask the task force to move toward intermunicipal advisory committee to look at improving the day-to-day operations, and then long-term to look at establishing a planning-focused interjurisdictional commission. This commission should not micromanage the day-to-day operations of the City Water and Wastewater Bureau, but really dive in on the regional planning issues that Councilmember Burnett mentioned, on water supply and stormwater management, and the various impacts of climate change from droughts to flood. So thank you again for your time and consideration.
Any other folks looking to testify? Please use the raise hand function. Going once, going twice, gone. All right, we're going to close testimony. I want to thank you, Comptroller Henry, for just really kind of laying it out there as transparently and honestly as possible, and I appreciate your work and advocacy on the task force and what is a, clearly a very complicated issue that we're trying to resolve. And I think we all want to make sure that we're delivering the highest quality of water possible to both the city residents and county residents that we support as well. And whatever comes forward, we want to make sure that we don't give up all the good parts of the system that support folks that maybe can't afford it or have advocacy from the folks that actually own the system. So, you know, I appreciate all the work that you're doing and even more your effort to be inclusive with the council in the course of chairing the commission. So with that, Councilmember, anything you want to add?
No, I just want to thank you, Mr. Chair, and the committee for having this time today, and also for the comptroller for, I know you and your staff have put an enormous amount of work into this, and, you know, certainly appreciate your thoughtfulness on the whole process. And so I do appreciate that. I just wanted to just make one more plug that the stormwater piece is critical. We experienced some flooding. Luckily, 35th and Hillen did not the other day, but it could happen at any time. And that water isn't just from Baltimore. It falls, but it also falls in the county and then comes downhill. And so if we're not addressing stormwater in a regional fashion, we can put all the money into the infrastructure, and it's unfortunately going to be for naught. So we, hopefully it won't be, but we will plan accordingly. But however, we've got to address that. So I just want to thank you for doing this. Hopefully, I mean, I know I'll listen in on the 25th for your last meeting. I think we have some conversations we want to have internally about how the council will play a role in the next phase, because it's my understanding that once the 25th occurs, that the task force is basically no more, unless the General Assembly reauthorizes in some way. So, you know, there's some more conversation. I mean, I think what we all know is that there are improvements to be made. There are things that we have to do to improve our system, and it's just a matter of figuring out the best way to do it. So I appreciate that the General Assembly pushed us in this direction, but we have, you know, we definitely, as a council, want to be much more involved in that. So, anyway, thanks, everybody, for your time this afternoon.
Thank you. This hearing's in recess.[1794.48][1794.48]